Paula, you there?
How do you get visual?
Well, when everybody comes on, you can see they're coming on.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Hello, Holly. Hello, Paula.
Hi, Chip.
Hello.
Hi, Chip. Sorry, took me a minute. I was doing something.
That's okay.
How you doing?
We're all surviving, right? Everybody wait. Oh, our camera's not on yet.
Snow is a nightmare.
There we are. There we are.
Hey, Jack, are we keeping you away from the curling competition?
No, I'm recording it.
I could, I could. Speaking of Mr. Buck, how are you?
You still calm, very?
All right.
Hi, you're great, huh?
Yeah, you remember me? Yes, how you doing?
Been a few years.
Been a few years, yeah.
This one says what's happening.
Oh, yeah. Really? There's nothing on TV? You just wanted to be?
The weather made it closed up. Yeah, when are you gonna get some live coverage down there? This is for the public. Here. Yeah, sure. All right, this is about all. Probably go sneak.
So, wait, if you participate here, is that can put you out of some appeals process? You're gonna chair and board a field?
No.
He's not a lawyer.
No.
You're just on the board.
And just on the board. And just one easily votes. That's good. Would be a lawyer.
No.
Divorce lawyer.
Hey, Paula, how are you?
Hey, Henry, I'm good. How you doing?
Good, nice to see you. Hi, Jen. Hi, Dawn. Hi, Noel.
Good evening.
Henry, Jan, Don, Jack. Did I see Noel? You here, Noel?
Noel's there.
Yeah, he's here.
Okay. I know. There you are.
You need a bigger screen.
Yeah. Okay, I see everybody. Okay, it's 6:30. I'll call the meeting to order. We have a few items on the agenda tonight. I'm hoping we can work through fairly quickly. If we don't finish, I may have to excuse myself shortly after 7:30 because I do have another commitment, but I think we can probably make it through these items, and if not, you know, Jack, you can you can finish up when we get to the end, but the first first item on the agenda is a new application for a storage structure. The application is by Brett Roberts. This is a commercial storage facility that's being proposed on Route 41. And so either Mary or Brett, if you-
Can I ask something first?
Oh, sure, Jack.
Um, I was just looking at this and for the first time and doesn't this come under the commercial and industrial district language because it's more than five between the storage building? I don't know if the existing building is on the same lot, but then also the boat storage it's over 5,000 square feet. And so we would follow that process, which is different than our normal process.
Well, Chip, you and I talked about this, and my understanding was that the proposal would not exceed the 5,000 square feet. So maybe we can talk about that and be clear, but that was my understanding that it did not, because we specifically had that conversation.
We had the conversation that it's all in the packet here, and I think if we let them speak, they will explain exactly what they want to do.
Okay. Um, you're good with that, Jack. We can hear what the proposal is, and we can we can talk about the 5,000 square feet if that remains relevant after their summary of the application.
Okay.
So either Mary or Brett, if you could provide a summary and explain the proposal, that would be helpful to us.
Hi, everybody. I miss you guys. I haven't been there in a long time. Um, I will start. I'll let Brett fill in the details. Jack, I want to start with addressing your question, which is something about existing structures and combined to get 5,000 square feet. There is no existing structure on this lot. It's the old Potter Storage Oil Storage Site has been empty for a long time. The new proposed structure is only 4,800 square feet, and the ordinance talks about structures for commercial and industrial uses are to have being 5,000 square feet. There is no other structure being proposed other than the building, the boat storage area will just simply be a dedicated part of the back of the lot.
The the storage of boats, isn't that on some sort of structure?
No.
They're just sitting on the ground?
It'll just be a level part of the of the lot, exactly. It may be graded, but the boats are sitting, well, I'll let Brett explain, but boats are usually stored either on trailers or on cradle cradles on the ground.
Continue.
The proposal is, this is not a self-storage type of building. I want to emphasize that to you guys. This is a professional commercial storage facility with an entrance and an exit for larger vehicles to be able to actually drive through. It will have an office. It will have personnel. It's not the kind of place that people can stop in on their own with their own padlock kind of thing and do self-storage stuff. We think that the site will need very little grading and change to it. There will be some vegetation that we're going to be planting between the building and Route 41 to provide some screening. There's a little bit there now, but it's a little scrubby, so we'll probably leave a couple of pines and the maple that are there, but plant some other stuff to give it a little more of a buffer.
I think the pine went down last night.
Did it go down? Oh, my gosh. One of our biggest concerns is where the water runoff from the metal roof is gonna go. There's an existing drainage swell that Route 41 already kind of almost has turnout from Route 41's northerly drainage area onto this property, onto the, I guess that would be the westerly side, that we will be slowing down the water as it comes off the roof into a gravel drip edge and then kind of eating it towards that existing drainage, so that it shouldn't have any greater velocity hopefully going off the site than it does now. I will let Brett answer any specific questions. He does have, in addition to what's in your packet, he has a much better photograph of rendering of what the building is going to look like. Unfortunately, it's on his phone. I think if we actually held it up to the zoom camera here, you guys might be able to see it, and I'm willing to take that short. Just focus for a second and see if you can see this. It's a lot better representation of what, closer, Brett, closer, 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 closer. There you go.
That's exactly what it's gonna be, color and everything.
You can see that it's got windows and shutters, and it's gonna have, this one has two cupolas. Ours will have one cupola with a little weathering on top. So it's a little more architecturally interesting than what I had submitted as part of the packet. But you can at least get the idea of what what he's looking at here.
Yes, thank you.
I had a question. I have a question.
Okay, Jack.
We recently dealt with another project along an entryway onto Route 41, and Maine DOT refused to grant an entrance permit onto Route 41, and I'm wondering if you've had any discussions with them about this project?
I haven't, but the entrance is already there. It has been for years.
Yeah, I think the entrance is grandfathered, Jack, because the curb cut has been there for fifty or sixty years, as far as I understand it, back when the potters owned the site. But we can certainly double check with DOT to see if, for some reason, that entrance is no longer considered grandfathered. I've not seen that situation, but give it a give them a call.
Okay. If we went through a whole thing on this other project and then they wouldn't grant an entrance permit.
Could I ask whereabouts this project was in relation to the intersection with 17?
It's a development further down 41, the development on the right, the big lots. I forget the name of it.
Balsam Ridge, right?
Balsam Ridge. We wanted to create another entrance way.
Jack, in that case, though, it was creating a second entrance because they'd already granted for the subdivision an entrance, right? They were denying a second entrance up for that subdivision.
Right. So I just, what what this one has.
Well, Mary, if you could just check on that, that would be useful. Just make sure that that is, in fact, grandfathered from previous use.
So when, I know you said you're gonna plant evergreens and stuff, so when you're driving down Route 41 or you're on Route 17, will any of this building or boat storage be visible from Route 41 or Route 17?
It'll be somewhat visible from Route 41. I don't believe it'll save from 17. I don't think it'll save from 17 at all. I don't see how you could.
And how far off Route 41 will it be, the building?
We were gonna go, I think, 60, 70.
I think we propose it to be about 75 feet back from the edge of, right away at 41, Jack. That's not a dimension that's on the plan, but I remember that's what we were talking about.
Okay. Did did you finish your your summary, Brett, or was there more that you'd like to add?
No, it's just gonna be a 4,800 square foot building. It's gonna be boats and RVs stored inside, and I was asking for a few boats to be stored out behind the building. That's about it. Pretty simple. There's no water. Not have to bring water or sewage or anything like that.
So are there questions from board members, other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So I was looking at the the stormwater section of the application, and it says, building will crush stone drip edge to catch runoff. Site has existing ditch carrying stormwater from Route 41 westerly across the level area and off property. All drainage will continue to follow current ground conditions, and will build and will follow best management practices for erosion control. So my question is, in terms of the amount of impervious surface, that, I mean, there is obviously impervious surface there now, but have you calculated how much change there will be as a result of of this project?
No, not really. It's gonna be about a 25-foot graded area around it with gravel. The rest of it is a lot of mud or touch.
I'm not sure what the impervious surface is now. Dawn, I don't think that's, we haven't measured on site what's out there for, is there an old slab or something, or a couple of slabs?
There's no slab.
There's no slab?
There's a little bit of gravel in the entryway, about 25, 30 feet in, and that's about it.
So it will be an increase, Dawn, specifically the the roof drainage job of the building?
The building, yeah, okay.
Okay, are there any any questions for Brett or Mary?
I have a question. I'm looking for to understand a little bit more about what goes on inside, so the way I hear it is there's gonna be someone there often, but yet, and there's an office, and it's only storage. And yet, you know, you don't have a need for water or-
There's not gonna be anybody there, and that's in the fall, people will drop off their stuff. I'll I'll be the one putting in the building, and then that'll be just a here and there thing over. People usually start storing their boats around later day, and it goes for a couple of weeks, usually by the, you know, first of October, second of October, it's usually done. It'd just be like, somebody will drop some boats off or something on a Friday afternoon, and someone might go down and put them in there, and that'd be a boat yet. There's not gonna be any personnel there full time at all. It's just it's just me.
Supposed to be my appointment then sort of?
By appointment, yes. Basically, that's what, I'll get a call, I'll tell them to drop it off, and then I'll go down there and put it in the building.
Have a quick question.
Henry.
You're, just to make it clear, you're not you're not proposing any boat maintenance or vehicle maintenance or any other kind of cleanings or anything like that at this facility, right? This is purely a managed storage facility?
Yes. Correct.
Yep.
So in terms of traffic, your expectation would be that most of it would come in the fall just with drop offs? And the rest of the year, there wouldn't be much of anything, although maybe a trickle, is that?
Drop off and pickup would be the most of it, and that would be over a couple of weeks' time.
Yeah, and it's principally vehicles, vehicles, boats, both inside and out?
Boats, RVs and boats, yes. Yep.
So this is the site of the former Potter Oil Storage Area?
Yes. Which is not subject to a V-Rap. I was surprised to see that. I knew that they had had a little bit of spill history there, but it was actually pretty minor when I looked it up compared to what happened uphill. So we're all faintly well aware of, so I I'm not sure that this would be an appropriate site for residential construction, to be quite honest with you, but to do slab on grade here, we thought was appropriate, given the historical use.
So how many boats will be stored there? What area will that take up?
It'll be out behind the building. It'll just be a barrier behind the building of these baskets of 25 boats, up to 25 boats to be stored out back.
Up to 25 boats?
To be stored outside.
And what, and they just sit on the ground?
On a trail. They'd be on a trailer on the on the on boat to be on a trailer, yes. Shrink wrapped, yes.
So, Jack, similar to what you see now, if you drive by Clark Marine in the winter time, on your way to Longfellow's Greenhouses, you'll see a few boats lined up there on their trailers, shrink wrapped with white or blue shrink wrap. I think that's what Brett is envisioning.
Who's shrinks around?
I do. I I shrink wrap now, and I get a huge tolling for storage and shrink wrapping in this area right off Maricopa Lake. That's why I kind of wanted to do this area.
You do the shrink wrapping inside, or is that an outside job?
I usually do it at my house, and I tow it, probably tow it down. If I did do it down here, it would be inside, yes.
Is it a uniform color that you use?
I usually use white.
And is the, when you un-shrink wrap them, where does that wrap go?
Sometimes it goes home with the homeowner, and they just haul it off like that. The rest of the time, I would take and put it in a dumpster or reuse it. I can reuse some of it for a couple couple times, so.
So would you be using the town landfill transfer station?
I'd be, I'd be probably have my own dumpster. I have my own dumpster at my house, so I'd probably just use that. In Mount Vernon, yes, as Riverside is full, we'll come to get to.
And would any boat that's going to be stored outside be shrink wrapped or only some of them?
They would all be shrink wrapped outside.
If the boats are behind the building, would would you see any of the boats from Route 41?
You'd probably see some of them, yeah. Come up, you could probably see some of them, yes.
Why wouldn't the tree planting shield that?
I would. I mean, I'm just, if you're looking through, I'm sure, if you look down the driveway, you're gonna see some. I think for most parts, it's gonna be shielded, but, yeah, I think if you're really looking, you can probably see some.
I think if you're coming from Lynchup, Jack, if you're coming from the boat landing, driving up that way, I think you'll you'll see a little bit right there, because that's pretty open. That's not very vegetated on that side. But if you're standing right across the road on 41, it'll actually be probably more screened.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
And would you expect any of the boats to remain there for all four seasons, or is your expectation that they all leave for the summer season?
I wouldn't be doing any outside storage all season. It would be all, those would definitely go all season, put inside the building, that, I guess, I don't know why they would, but I guess I would.
Okay.
What are the what are the lot lines to the north and south and west like, as far as a buffer, natural buffer as they exist today? Is there is there some vegetation there already?
Yes.
I seem to recall there is, but I just can't quite remember.
There's trees on all four, all three sides.
Yeah.
Even on the side of some, but there's a stone wall and there's trees on all.
The the property, this this lot abuts a residential lot, does it abut Mark Wick's property, or is it on the other side, at Abut's Mark's property? And so what what's the buffer like on that side?
Again, it's a stone wall, and it's got trees on that that too, and bushes and stuff that are gonna remain there.
I'd call it overgrown weedy edges.
Yeah.
Wick's property, that would be a- The Wick's property, that would be a fair.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just trying to anticipate, like, if there would be a concern from a, but, but, or just visually, from, from that other, from that other angle. That's all.
Yeah. That's fine with me.
Brett, did you have something else?
I just wanted to add, I'll plant whatever vegetation is needed to hide whenever I can there.
And this is the village, not village residential?
Yes, it is a village owner. We have a question from the audience here.
Oh, is that your hand up clip?
That's mine.
We're all frozen, and I didn't know if you were just escalating and got frozen. Go ahead.
Well, I know this isn't a public hearing, but before we got to that stage, I just wanted to make a suggestion. These warehouses are very popular all over the country, as we know, and they're profitable, and that's good. The trouble with them is they so often have the appearance of just an industrial metal box, and as a result, a lot of cities and towns are zoning them out simply because of their industrial appearance. But because they are good business, and because we'd like to see business downtown, it might be a good fit, I would just like to encourage the applicant to try to incorporate some architectural character into the building.
Cliff, did you see Brett's photo?
I did. It looks better than I had imagined, yes. So there's a lot of things you can do to these, you can do a little, give it some three dimension, for example, it doesn't have to be a box. You can play with the roof a little bit, like, I think you see some you can mix some colors together. Landscaping you talked about. You can configure the roof to give it some character. Mix some materials together, it doesn't have to all be metal, use some, mix some wood or some brick veneer.
Some brick on the front of it, right on each side of the door.
Right.
That three, that three foot out, okay, it's got three foot, a black one going around the bottom, that's, that's gonna be gray, I thought about putting some that culture stone on the front of it.
Right, there's a lot of ideas online, I was looking today for quite a while.
Yeah. If you, you know anybody, Manchester Motors in Manchester?
Yeah.
That building's, it's got a lot of character to it.
Right.
It's gotta be someone, I'm kind of, that's kind of where I got the basis of, of doing this building, it was kind of something like that. Different colors and some, you know, make it look appealing.
Yeah, a lot of it's in the three dimension.
Yeah.
Giving it some
Yeah.
shape.
Yeah.
It, you, you can get a lot of character in a building without much additional cost.
Right.
And maybe you can save some money in landscaping if didn't need landscaping.
Right, instead of hiding it, right. Yeah.
There are architects in the business of doing nothing but designing these kind of buildings now, simply because other cities, as I mentioned, are zoning out because of
Right.
their warehouse appearance. So that's, that, it's right downtown, right next to a very attractive building.
Right.
It might be a good neighborly thing to do to.
I'm gonna put my best effort into making it look.
Put your best effort into it, and it, I do, I do like when I see it's better than I so that was my only comments.
Okay, so tonight, as you know, is a completeness determination, and I'd ask if planning board members have any other questions or concerns, issues, before we go to a vote on completeness. Nothing else? Okay, I guess we're ready for a motion, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we find the application complete, schedule a public hearing. I I was gonna waive the we're opening that up for discussion.
Okay. Is there a second to Don's motion? Second. Okay, Jan seconds, discussion. What are you all thinking about a site visit? It's a, it certainly is a property that's easily viewed and, you know, accessible for viewing from the main road. So I think that, you know, Don's right, we wouldn't necessarily have to do a site visit, but I opened that up for discussion.
I agree with Don, I don't think, I'm comfortable not doing a formal site visit, if the applicant is okay with sort of drive-by assessment of it, I think I'm okay with that.
I'm fine. Does anyone disagree with that? Anyone looking for a formal site visit? Okay, hearing none, so we have a motion and a second to find the application complete. Notify Butters, schedule a hearing, and waive the site visit. Any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote. Henry?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
And Paula, yes. Okay, thank you very much Brett and Mary, and we will be, by assumption chip, that we'll be looking to schedule the public hearing for our next meeting, which is February twenty-second.
Right. You good for that?
Yeah.
Mary?
I'm a maybe, but I'll try to be here.
Okay, you always can do the Zoom.
The maybe part of the West Branch Pond Camp, which is about as off the grid as you can get. I'm supposed to be coming back that morning, so hopefully.
You know, if, if, if that date doesn't work for you, we can certainly schedule for the first meeting in March, if that works better, that's, that's up to you, so.
I think it'll be fine, Paula, thank you for being so accommodating, I think that'll be shouldn't be too much of a stretch for me to get here.
You don't have Zoom up there?
Meeting.
That's good. Okay.
Can I, can I ask something again, are you sure this is village, village as opposed to village residential?
According to the zoning map that we pulled up online, it's village.
Yeah.
And you checked that as well, Chip, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look more.
It's brown, right?
Yeah.
We will try to, before the next meeting, get some kind of rate out of the DOT for you all on the engines for requirement or not, okay, great.
It's, it's village, it's village, Jack, I just looked it up.
Okay.
You guys can stay here.
All good, all right, thank you.
All good, you good?
Thanks.
Hi Mary, good to see you.
Yes.
Cliff, you ought to, Cliff, you should stay for the discussion of changes to the L U O.
If you make it quick, I got dinner waiting. I'll stay around.
Our chair is gonna be up by seven thirty, so I think.
Okay.
On. Okay, we have three sets of minutes to review and approve, starting with the twenty-eighth of September, and those, let's see, the twenty-eighth of September and November third, those were delayed because they had to do principally with safe space meeting house, and they were complicated, and no one really had had a chance to review those at the last meeting, so we have those before us tonight. So starting with September twenty-eighth, I'd ask if anyone has any comments or, or edits to that, that set of minutes. Thank you Holly for those, I thought they were very complete, and
You're welcome.
And clear, so I had no no suggested revisions to that set. Others?
I'm sorry, I'm just pulling it up, pulling up my comments again, sorry.
Okay.
Second.
And, you know, these, these weren't particularly important, because the bulk of the set of minutes had to do with Safe Space Meeting House, and you know, I think we would all agree that it was important that those were complete and accurate. And I would mention, for those of you that might not be aware, the Board of Appeals heard the Safe Space Meeting House appeal last week, and the appeal was denied.
Next, are we up to the next one, November third?
Henry, did you have, did you indicate you had comments on these?
I think, was there more than one version of this? Or we only got one? Just one, okay.
One, I think.
Didn't I edit one of them?
That was the, that was a later one, Jack, that you, you edited.
Okay.
It's the eleventh, I think, January eleventh.
Nope. I'm all set.
You're all set, okay. Others, any comments, edits?
All set.
Okay, is there a motion on the minutes of September twenty-eighth?
I mean, we accept the minutes of September twenty-eighth as written.
Jack seconds, discussion. Call for a vote, Henry?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
And Paula, yes. On moving on to November third. I had what, it's, it's more of a question than anything, on the first page of these minutes, under the Safe Space Meeting House portion, the one, two, three, four, five, six paragraph down that begins in section five A requested use. It goes on to say, clarification of two issues was requested. Jack asked that the definition of community center club be clarified. I didn't know what that meant, I, I can't imagine that you asked for clarification about the definition itself, we've talked so much about that definition, so I was unclear what this was getting at.
Yeah.
I don't know if you remember, Jack, what your comment was specifically, but I was puzzled by this, and I didn't really understand it.
I think probably I meant, I was trying to say that he was asking about the uses, maybe definition is the wrong word, the uses, or the
the limits or something.
That's, that sounds familiar.
So that's plausible, Jack, that you were looking, you were asking about, asking for clarity around the proposed uses?
Maybe.
The problem was, is that the, this set of minutes, the whole thing wasn't recorded, only the second half was, and so the first half, I was working on Kristen's notes, and they weren't very thorough, so I kind of had to wing it a little bit.
Well, would it be better, Jack, do you think, I mean, is there some thought that, or a question that you asked that you think should be captured here, or would be, be better off just deleting that portion? And, and, and just start it with Leah asked for clarification?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's, let's delete the first.
Okay, so the sentence I'd read now, in section five A, Leah asked for clarification, which portion?
Portion of the building and land all into resource protection, yeah, and delete the piece about Jack asking.
Okay.
Yeah. And I, I have nothing else in these minutes, anyone else have comments or edits? If there's nothing, I'd look for a motion.
These are ones of November third?
November third.
I'll move that we approve them as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, Henry?
Yes.
Jan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
And Paula, yes. Okay, the final set, January eleventh, which was our last meeting. I had a couple, a couple of, a couple of comments on these, on the on the second, second page, the second paragraph from the top, it says Fran Zambella queried the square footage, et cetera. Fran asked if the building will be visible from the road, which it will not. And I think I would suggest inserting likely will not, because our conversation was around whether or not we would be looking for vegetation planting to serve as a buffer, and although John Cushing was speculating that the building wouldn't really be visible from the road, I think there was enough of a question about it that we moved into the conversation about taking a look at it in a year, and if it turned out that plantings were, were necessary, that we could require them at that time. So I, I, I think the, you know, the definitive statement that it will not be visible, I think we need to soften that a little bit, and I would suggest inserting likely, which it likely will not for that reason. And then in the fourth paragraph down, in the second sentence of that paragraph, it says, they agreed to a one-year review of the plantings in front of the building to make sure they are adequate. And I would suggest perhaps modifying that to say they agreed to a review in one year of the possible needs, need for plantings in front of the building, or additional plantings in front of the building.
All right.
Also, in the first page, towards the bottom, where it says Jack noted right before the cushion storage rentals.
About the Johnsons, this is in the Johnson piece, Jack?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I thought I had changed this, because I didn't say that they have to start the process over again.
I took that out, it's not here.
No, it's here in mine.
It must have an old version.
Yeah, it's not in mine either, Jack.
Oh. Okay, it came with the February third. Okay, it came with the February third. Email from Chip. But okay, never mind.
Yeah, I got another email from Holly directly with them.
Yeah, I sent him to everybody. After I made Jack's changes, I sent him out to everybody again.
Cause what Chip attached was the old one there.
Okay, um, and um, the other, the other thing that I was going to mention to Jack, I don't know if you made, well, you probably didn't. Um, if what I'm looking at is the the piece that you revised, uh the set that you revised from January eleventh. At the bottom of the second page, uh that begins, Jack also queried the size of the current structure. This is about more ash now. And um, and then up on the top of the third page, uh that paragraph, it was noted. And um, as I read those, um, I just, I read them while I was doing something else this afternoon, I read this set. And I didn't have time uh to clarify the language, but I was a bit concerned that maybe it wasn't it's a complicated issue and that maybe it was not crystal clear and consistent with the conversations that we've been having with Kristen Collins and with the Moor Ashes about this issue. And um, because this is likely to come up again in I'm not sure uh what context, but we will be talking about this application um again. I wanted to make sure that it was uh completely clear and consistent with past discussions. And I thought, Jack, it, if if you've not had a chance to look at this, since you wrote the letter to the Moor Ashes and you wrote the piece for Kristen, um, if perhaps you could take a look at this and adjust it to make sure that it was clear in regard to that, because I I didn't, I didn't think it was.
So the, the first paragraph on the third page?
And um, the last paragraph on the, on the second page uh is more discussion about that whole situation. And uh there were things about it that I thought um could be um, could be clearer. And it's just, you know, it's just so, it's so complicated that it's, it's difficult to.
Okay, so you wanna table this one?
Um, you know, for that reason, I I think those other changes that we talked about could be made, but this one, uh my preference would be to table it to make sure that we get that, uh we get that right. And you know, I I can do it or you, you can do it, but I I do think it needs a little bit of attention.
You sent Jack a clean copy of the minutes with the changes we made tonight?
Okay.
I'll do it right now.
Okay, great. So, yeah, for that reason, let's, let's hold off on this set until, until next time. And uh, Chip, you had several items listed in uh the new business category, if you want to to begin with those.
Sure, just to update everybody on all the solar stuff that's going on. Uh, Sincarfa, as you all may know, we're waiting for the the bond for decommissioning and it finally came through late last year. Um, what was presented to state of Maine, they came back with changes. Sincarfa then did those changes and resubmitted it to us on uh Paul's suggestion, uh given that to Kristen Collins to go over, and that should be adequate as an answer back. As long as everybody's good with that. So Sincarfa is still, has not started. Um, anticipating that they'll be starting this spring. They're working very closely with CMP now, from my understanding. On top of that, we had a call, I had a call uh last week from a Karen Moody from Star Tech Solar. And I think they're in the process of acquiring a piece of land um towards Manchester, but east of um east of Crump Pond. Somebody mentioned there's thirty or forty acres there that's been for sale and they're looking to do a um two megawatt solar field there. They're sketchy on the details, they're still doing their due diligence, and they will most likely be coming to us within the next two or three meetings. Um, again, not a lot of detail, but um they seem to be very anxious to get going. Ask them, uh, if they were interested, they could have looked at the Sincarfa stuff, make sure that they got all their dots and Ts crossed and that was about it so far from them. So that's the solar update. The third item I have here is a uh ordinance that I proposed over in Wayne. Already discussed and will be going to a public hearing next month on it. Basically, uh looking to codify in our regulations what's, for the most part, already the main statutes. And um, I took a majority of this from Long Island Maine, who had adjusted it to make it a little bit tougher. And uh, I think one of the big things here is, you all remember, we had a bunch of issues this summer by a lot of the camps over on Morantico with failing steel septic systems. And uh, that was originally brought to light with a real estate agent that came to me like they're supposed to, but not many do, cause it's not required. Um, you know, making me aware that there were two camps over right next to each other that had failed. We uh had the rest of the camps checked and twelve of them had their septics replaced, which was a big deal, I think. And um, so this ordinance basically is in the state of Maine. I, I think I said it to you once, I will send it again, but basically lays out again what's required on um, when a property is transferred or sold or uh state changes that they're required, if they haven't done so in the last two years, to have a uh state inspector inspect their septic system and give it a check off. There's a few uh exceptions that are in that, that aren't very punitive. And uh, I think my addition, and I think Long Island Maine had it also, would require that somebody uh have a copy of that to the uh CEO for the file before closing or transfer the property. And um, I think that's one step we could take to improve the uh, the lake situation. And also, you know, in light of, we have so many camps around here that have been there since the fifties and sixties, they've been subdivided. And it's amazing, when I've talked to most of the uh subsurface and a lot of the plumbers around here, that there are a lot of these steel tanks and fail systems, and I think this would be one fix for it. So, again, with your permission, I'd like to uh submit that to you for discussion and possible approval for uh ordinance change.
What does it mean to have it inspected? What do they, what do they do?
State has a system where they uh qualify official inspectors to come and get certified to do these inspections on tanks, and I believe they probably do the fields also. I'm not sure of the details, but it's a, it's a, again, a certified, approved by the DEP in the state of Maine, group of people that are acquired in many towns to do this. And again, I believe that they're required to do it here too, but again, where we lose out is even if it's done, uh, we're not always, we're not very often made aware of failed systems, problematic systems or whatever. And this would give us a heads up on hopefully addressing problems, maybe they're just not, you know, single targets, but could be target with the, working with the associations and the people on the uh, the areas there to uh make sure that all the uh place, all of them are in good shape. And then again, it's something that uh, there's been a lot of discussion here and in other towns about the lakes and uh.
Sorry, is this limited to the shoreline residential district or the whole town? What?
It's a, the state law is, is, are currently limited to shoreline zoning. And the legislature required that the Department of Health and Human Services report back about expanding the program to statewide, but that hasn't happened to this point. Uh, but they did pass the law for inspections in shoreline zones. Not clear, Chip, whether what you're suggesting would be townwide or not. I mean, you know, we certainly could go that route.
Right. I, again, I suggest baby steps. Our most uh, you know, valued resource that's most affected are those shoreline houses. Um, there's where the small, you know, the small eighth of an acre and lesser there, I think it'd be a good start. And you know, from where we go from there, I don't know, maybe the state will trump us and, you know, do it statewide, but at least we'll have the infrastructure and the system in there to get it done, and I'd encourage everybody to consider this.
Uh, Don, the state law that you mentioned, um, does that require that municipalities do the inspections in the shoreline zone?
No, no, yeah. So there is, as Chip mentioned, there is a program. Um, Health and Human Services is required to have developed the requirements for who would be certified to do inspections, and they've come up with some language, basically relying on national certification processes. So there is something out there. Uh, there was concern though about whether there would be enough inspectors to really handle the workload, you know, that, that's why they didn't go to a statewide program and limited it to shoreline zoning. But, yeah, there's.
So all, all they did was, was set up the mechanism for the inspections, but didn't require inspections?
Um.
Required.
They are required at the time of transfer. I have, I'd have to go back and look at exactly how the language reads, is that, but it's, it's basically, it's it has to be paid for by the buyer seller at the time of the transaction. It's, it's not something the town has to do.
Correct, and in many towns, they uh, they allow local inspectors to come in. Engineers, whatever, until that, that formally is a program. But what they do not do is they do not require it to be filed with the town. And I think that's a big missing link that we could really use um to fortify our files on tanks, systems, and also identify where there could be group clusters.
Okay, so you're going to circulate that?
I will recirculate that. I did that a, a few months ago, but I have it cleaned up now. And uh, I'll send it along with the state statutes and also the uh Long Island Maine statutes.
And can you, can you double check to make sure you're just applying it to shoreline residential? Cause when I looked at it, I wasn't sure.
I will grant you that, yes, I'm sure that that's what it's meant to be. I'll make it clear if we have to, yes.
Okay, thanks.
The next uh would be, and Paul, you still got a few minutes, the L U O.
Yes, um, so as um, you'll probably all recall, we've talked at various points about revisions to the L U O that uh may be appropriate. We typically do a package each year uh and prepare it to go to the select board as a warrant article uh for the town meeting. Um, so over past months, as issues have come up, um, we've identified those and um have talked about making revisions in the ordinance to reflect those. I've kept a running list. Um, I may have missed something, and so what I wanted to do tonight was to run through that list and see if there are other issues uh that any of uh you have been thinking about or I think I've missed from this list. And then we can talk about the path forward for getting them drafted and getting them to hearing in time for uh preparation of a warrant articles by the select board. I did have a conversation um with Eric about the timeframe from all of this. And uh, he would be looking to uh get those revisions uh from us, at least in draft form in, in March. And then the final date uh is uh in, in April uh in order to get them to the select board for approval in time for that process to kick in. Um, I think we've got plenty of time to do that. Um, but we do need to get them drafted um as, as soon as possible. Um, one issue in particular that I think was more meaty and substantive than some of the others was uh the, you know, the conversation that we had around um dwelling units, accessory structures, you know, that, that whole matter. And I think that that's a heavier lift than some of the others. But I, a- as I've been thinking about that issue, that is something, and Henry, you'll recall this, I believe that did come up in the comprehensive plan context as well. And I think there was agreement uh that the Comprehensive Plan Committee wanted to have a conversation around those issues uh to incorporate something in the plan. Um, and um, I had a conversation with Eric about that as well, and, and suggested to him um, that I thought that the better place to start that conversation was with the Comp Plan Committee. That is the, you know, the, the planning, um, the planning function. Uh, I don't know how that conversation will go and what ultimately would be incorporated into the plan. But it, you know, it, it does seem sensible to me and reasonable that um, the L U O revisions would follow from the plan and not the other way around. So I wanted to put that out there for your consideration. I think it's an important issue, and I think we're going to need to deal with it in the L U O. But because the Comp Plan had focused on it at one of the meetings as an issue that was going to be taken up uh within that group, um, it felt to me like um, we should let that play out and then take our cues from the Comp Plan or the, you know, the, the general direction of the Comp Plan and um, and then make the revisions around after that.
Does that mean that you wouldn't do it this time around?
Right.
Your changes?
Right.
I'm wondering whether some L U O changes might be made in terms of accessory structures used, if dwelling units having to need setbacks. Maybe just that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, we could, we could split off those pieces and do it that way. Um, I mean, I, I just didn't want to set up a situation where, you know, the Comp Plan discussions and decision making would potentially collide with what we do in the L U O. That didn't seem an appropriate outcome. So that was one issue. Um. Um, the next issue I had on my list, um, we had talked about modifying the ordinance to deal with minor revisions to applications and subdivision plans um in a somewhat different way. To extend the exemption or to set up a simpler process for some of those reviews. And I, I think we had identified that issue as an outcome of the uh Johnson, the Brittany and Quentin Johnson application for the addition of that lot uh to their current lot. And my sense was that the general feeling was that that was not, you know, a proposal that needed extensive review and that we would all be better off if we could set up a better mechanism to allow some of those simple revisions to go through without a full application process. Um, the next issue I had on my list was on, this came up uh as a result of the Safe Space Meeting Issue, and um that was to directly um connect uh in the site review section of the ordinance. Connect to that uh section, what was it, nineteen, I believe, where there are other uh uh standards um that may be relevant to certain projects. Um, and that was the, like, the second set of standards that we went through with Kristen Collins on the Safe Space Application. Some of those were relevant, some of them weren't. But the conversation that we had and Jack's observation was that it would be better if the ordinance clearly and, you know, uh on its face linked the site review standards to that set of standards and made it clear that some of those may apply at the, at the time of site review. So, um, and then the final issue that So, um, and then the final issue that I had on my list was the incorporation of the new decommissioning law into the solar ordinance. And, um, I'm assuming, Henry, that that would be a relatively simple matter, uh, to pull that over from the law into the ordinance.
Think, I think it's more just, uh, referencing the correct length, correct, the correct statute. And then, um, probably um, aligning or, you know, eliminating the lan- you know, deleting language from our, our ordinance related to the decommissioning other than the fact that it's related to the state, follows the state's guidance. Cause what, our, that's, that's what we were trying to do, and that's what they did. So.
Since we have the benefit of Cliff here, I wonder if he has any ideas too.
I just give note, do not forget to rezone that one lot that's in the academic district.
Oh, Kinsale.
Kinsale, it's map one oh six lot two. Uh, they've been waiting several years now to sell it. There was one other also by Kinsale School. I'm not sure if that got done last year. But there was an issue with one of the houses up there that when he went to refinance, he found out he was in the, uh, academic zone. And he was looking to get it zoned properly.
I think it's, I think it's the same house.
No, there's no house of the property I'm talking about.
What you're talking about is down Route forty-one, right?
No, I am.
Yes. Cliff is.
The one that you're talking about is in Kinsale proper?
Yeah, it, it was in school.
I know you gotta go. You're one minute past. I would just add that, um, I would also like to have a discussion with the board about some additional language which has been recommended, um, related to dual use, usage of solar properties. And that's a big topic right now. You've probably read about it in the paper and we're talking about it. But, um, um, there are some things we can do to put into our ordinance that would just enhance that encouragement and or requirement. Which is, which is, you know, which is a good thing.
Yep. Um, so, uh, the, you know, the, um, the, the time we have to deal with this package, I think is adequate. But it's, you know, it's relatively short. And I think the sooner that we can get some of these things into, um, into, you know, proper, proper form, uh, for the board to review. And then, uh, get them scheduled for hearing, um, is, is important. So, um, uh, Jack, uh, the piece that you mentioned about the accessory structures and the setback, is that something you could draft up for consideration?
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
And I can do the, uh, site review and the Article eight issue.
Okay, okay. I can, um, I can draft something up on the minor revisions or the exemptions for, for minor revisions. Um, I'm happy to do that. And then, uh, Henry, I'm assuming that, um, that you're offering to do the solar case.
Uh, sure. Yeah, I'm happy to do that. No problem.
Maybe could, could Holly send us the L U O in Word?
You want, I'm sorry, could you say, you want what?
Could you send us the L U O in, in Word? We can make the changes and show the edits.
Yeah, I think so. I'll, I'll, I don't have a copy. I might have a copy. I'll, I'll find it. I'll find it. Yes, I'll do that.
Um, and, uh, and, and before I, I do go, I mean, certainly continue, continue the discussion. If there are other things that you'd like to add to this list, um, that would be great. Um, uh, you know, if there are things that you've been thinking about, that we need to make some changes to. Um, otherwise we'll, we'll proceed in, in, you know, in this direction for the moment. Um, if there are things that occur to you, uh, you want to raise them at the next meeting, I think we still have time uh, to address them, provided they're not monumental and complex, uh, cause I don't think we'll have time for that. But, um, if there are other minor modifications to the ordinance, um, I think if you raise them next time, we'll have time to incorporate those as well.
So Paula, I just was trying to recall where we are in the comprehensive planning process. So when that, when is that gonna?
Well, well, everything kind of imploded.
Wish, I wish we knew the answer.
Yeah, I, well, were you with the last meeting, Henry? Stayed there that, um, um, basically, um, the decision has been made to bump it out a year. Um, we're going to continue with the process, but one of the major problems was that our contract with K V cog. Um, who theoretically was providing support for this comprehensive plan effort. Um, uh, things, things, uh, went amok because the planner, who was the principal in that exercise, uh, left K V cog and has gone off to Portland, I think. And we were just kind of left with nothing, uh, the work that, you know, we had assumed, um, already had been done. A lot of that we didn't get. And so we kind of took a step back at the last meeting and reassessed things and agreed that, um, the process needed to be bumped out. So, you know, that's, that's the, the broader story. Um, and so that, that is going to happen. And, um, um, the other agreement was that for the moment, um, until the K V cog situation stabilizes a little bit, we're gonna take kind of a breather and, um, uh, there is not a meeting. Again, the next meeting is in March. Uh, so there's no February meeting. Um, it won't be happening in March instead. So, um, yeah, that, that's the short story. Uh, it was much longer than that, but.
I, I was wondering if there was anything we needed to, um, just based upon the, um, our experience with the medical marijuana, uh, discussions. If there was anything that we needed to revisit there in the ordinance, I can't, I seem to recall it was sort of, there was a, there was some things that weren't that clear during that discussion. And most of it, most of it went to the select board. But I mean, I'm, I'm had to take a look at it again and see what I can remember. But I, I, I do vaguely recall that coming up.
I think it was a pretty bumpy process, but I remember it being more about the applicant than the ordinance. But maybe there were some things that could be clarified. And I'll, I'll have to excuse myself. I really, I really do need to go, but, uh, continue. And if there's anything you want to add to the list, please do that. And, um, we can try to get, uh, what we have identified ready for an initial review at the next meeting. And, um, so we'll, we'll talk about it some more then. So, thank you. Good night, everyone.
So Cliff, I had a question for you from the appeals board. You, when you reviewed the safe space meeting house, was there anything in the site review criteria that needs to be clarified?
Uh, I don't think so. No, I thought, I thought it worked pretty well.
What was the issue? The issues that you picked up on were financial burden to the town. Was that one of them?
Yes, I was a well, Will had sent us kind of a lecture email about how we needed to be prepared to prove everything, which we should. Uh, and, um, I thought that the plan words finding, uh, financial burden was not clearly proven because they didn't, there wasn't any documents to show that they had consulted with the road committee or the road commissioner or gotten any prices on sidewalks. Uh, they just assumed that a, a common sense judgment, it was, but there was assumption that the cost would be overwhelming.
So when it says financial burden to the town, should not cause an unreasonable financial burden. Would you want something that we contacted the town and the town said it would be a hundred thousand dollars and it's not on the budget and doesn't foresee it being in the budget or something like that?
Right. You're just saying from the road committee that it's, it's, uh, financially not workable for, to foreseeable future.
And Cliff, do you have any other suggestions for L U O changes?
Oh, uh, I, I thought it would have looked better on the wetland impact and uh, if privacy had, uh, given us a review on that, a formal review.
All right.
It's kind of common sense if you put a parking area down there. Um, in addition to potential road runoff, that it, uh, was going to have an impact. But, uh, it wouldn't have been very difficult to prove it and we're made it a tighter case.
Okay. So does anyone else have any other ideas for changes? No? Did we adjourn?
I had a question for, I had a quick question for Chip. Chip, a while ago, you mentioned a solar project application, or at least a sniffing around the edges of an application at Kinsale School. I was wondering if you had any more information about it.
No, they've got crickets on us. Haven't heard a thing.
Okay. Thanks.
No, I'm interested to know, since you're new and you look at the ordinance, whether it makes, you know, whether you have suggestions for reorganizing it or rewarding parts of it.
Well, I it's definitely on my list to spend more time with it. Um, I did find the language about grandfathering to be from my impression weak. Cause what someone does on a lot should impact it just as much as what they do in the building. Cause what they do in the lot might have bigger negative externalities than whatever they're doing in the building. So that, that part I thought was odd, but hey, a sort of cursory review. But I got some thoughts, still mulling them over. So I think it's a little early for me to to, um, suggest much more than that.
Okay. Anyone else?
But thank you for asking, Jack.
No, because when I look at the ordinance, sometimes it, it just, the way it's set out doesn't make sense to me in some ways. But I'm used to it.
It's rough.
What do you mean?
You could just tell. I mean, it, like, it's just grown over the years. It's the same thing. And every year it gets bigger and more complicated. And we try to make it more streamlined and it just, you know, it's just, it's just, uh, becoming wieldly. But that's okay. There's nothing wrong with it as long as it's, as long as it's properly referenceable and usable. That's really what matters. Um, what about definitions? I think it's probably worth looking at some of those again. Maybe you, maybe you already mentioned that. I just can't remember. But I, I always like to look at definitions and make sure they're updated to modern standards.
Yeah, I don't know. I noticed that there wasn't a definition of warehouse of storage, I don't think. But maybe that's so common, it doesn't need it.
Yeah, we may want to take a look at the land use table to make sure we're not missing anything there either. You know, we had that, there was that dichotomy between, um, not, not having, you know, not having the, you know, with the, with the safe space meeting house, um, you know, some of those activities that were there. We may want to try and think about those activities and try to see how that would be, could be clarified. So it was a little clearer.
When Holly sends us the O U O, make the changes.
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think, again, that, that's not anything that would be, you know, changing anything really. It's just creating clarity of the allowed use, the defined allowed use.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Guess we, we can adjourn, right? Chip, anything else?
Not tonight.
Uh, I can't make the next meeting if it's in two weeks. I will be away. Just so you know, Jack, so I should have mentioned earlier to Paula, but we may not have a quorum for that night. So you may want to talk to her about that.
So that's the twenty-second?
Yeah, I'm out that week. It's school vacation week and, um, I'm going away with my family. So.
So as well, same reason.
No, Noel and Don, are you there for that meeting?
Yeah, I should be able to be there.
And I'm there and if Paul's there, we'd have four. Is that okay with you guys? Jan and Henry? We meet without you? Well, Henry, can you get the solar changes to us?
What, before I'm even, when I'm not even there? Your expectations are very high. No kidding. Yes, I could try to, I can try to get them for you, although actually, no, there's no way I can get them to you because, um, I'm leaving next week. And, uh,
Okay. Did we decide when we're gonna review the application that we just heard this morning, you know, earlier?
I mean.
The next meeting.
Yeah.
But I thought that Mary Dennison said she couldn't make the twenty-second.
Oh, she's, she could.
Oh, she could. Okay, I'll talk to Paul about maybe the date.
I have, I have no, I have no significant concerns about it. I think it's, I think it's a, as long as it's visually pleasing and it sounds like he's willing to do some sort of architectural things, you know, as long as it's not gawky in our, in the middle of our town. But I mean, you know, it is, it is a it's a good growth thing and it would definitely be, uh, um, you know, you, a used facility. There's a demand for it.
Uh, but you can't get the changes to us before then.
Wow.
I will try, Jack.
They don't have to be to Eric until March.
Yeah, I mean, um, what I'm asking is, should we put off the meeting till the first Tuesday in March?
Oh, the L U O discussion or just the whole meeting?
The whole thing. I'll talk to Paul. I mean, would you have it ready by then?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Okay. Anyway, I'll, I'll talk to Paul about what, and Jan, you could be there on the fifth or whenever that is.
Yeah, the March meeting is good.
Okay, I'll ask her. Thanks.
I urge you to have that meeting on the twenty-second, if at all possible. I wouldn't be surprised to see Mr. Morash coming back to the market. And you've got all this other things going on. You could get some things out of the way before the, those meetings.
Actually, I might not be available for the March meeting now that he said. Or my microphone just won't be working that night. I'll, um, yeah. You should at least get this one application through if you can. If people are, if you have a quorum.
Okay. We'll let you know.
It's my opinion, but whatever. I'll be there in March.
Okay. Anything else by anyone? Anyone, anyone? Okay, so I'll close the meeting.
Have a good night. Thank you. Thanks, Cliff. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Hey, Chip.
Yes.
Who's that nice woman to your right? Oh, you, I'm sorry, you're who?
The new collections clerk.
Oh, okay, okay. And, and your name is?
Angelica.
Angelica, oh my. And then, um, the married person, was her last name Roberts?
No, that was.
Oh, but she's, she's with the, with the Brett Roberts guy.
He's the representative. She works with, uh, the firm of Dennison and Lake down in Winter.
Oh, oh, she's an attorney. Does Dennis have one in or two, do you know? I'll look it up, but just to be sure. Okay.
Holly, I have, I have a word version of the L U O, which I'll send them all a second time.
Okay. Can I, can we talk, um, sometime? I, I'm having a little trouble. Some of this stuff I'm not familiar with. And you get into these solar topics and I have no idea what bond decommissioning is. And it's hard to write about this stuff if you don't know what it is. So sometime this week, when you have a chance, could you give me a call or email me and let me know or something so I can, like, pick your brains a little? So sometime this week, when you have a chance, could you give me a call or email me and let me know or something so I can like pick your brains a little?
Wednesday and Friday, just come on by or give me a call.
Wednesday or Friday. Okay, okay, great. Thank you. Nice seeing you, Cliff.
Okay, you too, Holly.
Bye.
Nice. Good job.
Thank you.